Clinton City Council will please come to order. We'll begin tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gasman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
McGraw.
Here.
Alisi.
Here.
Shimmers.
Here.
Oder.
Here.
Thank you. A little different process tonight, something I haven't had the opportunity to do, but we're gonna, we're starting a new, some new ideas since we have a new city administrator and some new recognition. Councilmember Gasman.
Uh-oh. I skipped one meeting.
Would you join me out here, please?
He says no.
You notice he's not coming to help. Yeah, my boy is carrying guns. No, tonight, Paul, you know, the city's been a little lax on doing this, but this is to recognize 10 years of service on the city council.
Thank you.
And I simply, a bit of history, you actually have more years than that.
I have more years than that, yeah. Can't you tell? Thank you very much, though.
No, you're correct. It's time that we start to recognize council members along with the employees, so.
I appreciate very much. Thank you all.
Congratulations.
There's a day left.
Okay, councilmember, Alisi, you're next.
Your honor, I move that we dispense with the reading of the special city council meeting minutes of February 5th, 2018, and they be approved as published on February 15th, 2018.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? Are there any discussion? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman. Yes.
Thank you. We'll move to public hearings. Oh, you got.
Yes, your honor.
You didn't tell me that in advance. Councilmember Alisi, please.
Your honor, I move to dispense with the reading of the regular city council and committee of the whole meeting minutes of February 13th, 2018, and they be approved as published on February 27th, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Are there any discussion? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you. We have five public hearings tonight, so I'll convene our first public hearing concerning the 2018-2019 fiscal year city operating budget. Have we had any comments in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there anyone in the audience that wish to comment on this public hearing? Hearing none, councilmember Shimmers.
I move that the public hearing concerning the 2018-2019 fiscal year city operating budget be entered into the record.
Sure.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimmers?
I have a resolution approving the 2018-2019 fiscal year city operating budget. I move that this be entered in the record as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Are there any discussion? Any questions? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll convene now a public hearing concerning the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of a not-to-exceed $8,100,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes. Have we had any comments in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Anyone in the audience wish to address this public hearing? Hearing none, councilmember Oder.
Thank you, your honor. I move that the public hearing concerning the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not-to-exceed $8,100,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for essential corporate purposes be entered into the record.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Am I, I got distracted, I'm sorry. We have a motion and a second? Thank you. Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Oder.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not-to-exceed $8,100,000 general obligation capital loan notes, and I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Your honor, I wouldn't mind if Jason get up and explain to the public what all this is going to.
There was special secretions in the pen we gave him.
Oh, he opened it already.
Do you really want the money?
No.
No, it's a lot of money, but I think we went through that the last three months, so.
Yeah. Well, there'll be another time to actually talk about it when we actually start, when we actually do the bond itself.
Yeah.
It is generally listed, though.
Yeah.
Very vaguely, okay?
They all three are.
General obligation bond.
Yeah, it's a general obligation. When we actually do loan the money, we'll have, we'll have more discussion about it. So if there's no other discussion, could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you. I'll convene our third public hearing concerning the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not-to-exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for the general corporate purpose. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this public hearing? Hearing none, councilmember McGraw.
Thank you, your honor. I move that the public hearing concerning the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuing of not-to-exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes be entered into the record.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember McGraw.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not-to-exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes. I move that the resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Are there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you. I will now convene a public hearing concerning the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of a not-to-exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan note of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for general corporate purposes. Have we had any comments in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Anyone in the audience wish to address this public hearing? Hearing none, councilmember Gasman.
Thank you, your honor. I move that the public hearing concerning the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not-to-exceed $700,000 general obligation capital loan notes of the city of Clinton, state of Iowa, for general corporate purpose be entered into the record.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley. Yes.
Thank you. I will now convene our final public hearing concerning the 2018 Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, application. Have we had any comments in the clerk's office?
No, we have not, your honor.
Anyone in the audience wish to comment at this public hearing? You.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Schneider with Community Development Director with ECIA in Dubuque. I was down here back in December, I think was the last time I was here at the council meeting, and we talked about this very same application. And it's an application to the Community Development Block Grant program with the state of Iowa, with their opportunities and threats set aside. And the state has been reviewing the application, and one of the things that they noted was that historically they have never required public hearings for opportunities and threats applications, and HUD has been having conversations with them on such applications and believes they should have public hearings for those, and so we have set and are holding a public hearing on it tonight, inviting any public comments. And as usual, there are nine questions that need to be addressed within the public hearing, and so I can go through those, and it's a review pretty much of what we talked about back in December. And the need for the proposed activities were identified by city of Clinton and ECIA staff over the, over time, where it's been noted the city budgets annual, the funds to acquire and demolish or deconstruct derelict homes and buildings within the city, and it's believed that the proposed CDBG funding could be used with some of the homes that may be feasible for rehabilitation and resale, allowing them to be returned to the city's housing stock as safe, decent, and sanitary homes at an affordable price for the proposed home buyers. Proposed activities will be funded by a $500,000 CDBG grant, and the city would work with ECIA and its nonprofit arm, the East Central Development Corporation, to rehabilitate the dilapidated homes, and also provide down payment or mortgage buy-down assistance to income-qualified home buyers. The city will acquire the properties with city funds and then pledges that estimated cost of about $60,000, estimating about $10,000 per house, as the local match to this project. That match is not, obviously not cast in stone, because we don't know what that's going to amount to in terms of the cost to acquire those properties. Normally, we'd be talking about an application deadline, only in this particular case, there is no deadline for opportunity and threats applications, and the council approved the application as December 12th, 2017 meeting, and that application was indeed submitted back on December 14th to the Economic Development Authority for their review and consideration. As I noted, city's requesting $500,000 in CDBG funds. The estimated portion of funds that would benefit low and moderate income persons would actually be 100% because the homes would be sold to income-qualified home buyers. Proposed activities would be conducted within the city limits of Clinton. There's no restricted area. By it anywhere within the city would be eligible. There is, by the design of the application and project, there would be no anticipated displacement of households or persons or businesses. And the city does agree, however, should there be some displacement, that the city would agree that it will comply with Uniform Relocation Act and/or Section 104D of the Housing Community Development Act as amended, should there be displacement. And lastly, the nature of the proposed activities are that the city would propose to acquire six dilapidated homes within the city, and the city would then sell those, as I mentioned, to ECIA's nonprofit arm, the East Central Development Corporation, and the homes would be rehabilitated and sold to income-qualified households at affordable price, with the potential that it could be down payment or mortgage buy-down assistance provided to the homeowners to make them affordable. And those are the nine items. I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
How quickly could we find out, once we get this taken care of, and?
I've actually had some conversation with the state. They're hoping within the matter of probably a couple weeks that they should be able to have an answer.
Was, is the feedback thus far good, bad, indifferent?
It's been positive so far.
Good.
They're optimistic about it.
Because this is a kind of unique, little different than what's typically done, isn't it?
It's more than a little different. It's, it'll be actually the first program of its kind in the state. The state's actually, they're looking at their overall set aside of CDBG money for housing rehab activities, and they're considering revamping it, and this would be in a pilot project, so one of the things they're going to look at in terms of future of the program and what they should be doing with their funds.
So when we get these funds, we got to make sure it works perfectly?
Ideally, perfectly, will be defined. That's why it's a pilot project.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Seeley then.
Thank you, your honor. I move that the public hearing concerning the 2018 Community Development Block Grant application be entered into the record.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Seeley.
Your honor, I have a resolution confirming support of the Community Development Block Grant Opportunities and Threats Application. I move this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion, questions? Hearing none, could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearings for tonight, so we'll move to audience comment. No one's turned in a slip to speak, but I will ask if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to address us. Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Alisi.
Your honor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call then, please, on the consent agenda?
Councilmember Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Seeley.
Your honor, I have an ordinance for the third consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Are there any discussion? Could we have a roll call then, please?
Councilmember Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending chapters 90 and 94 of the Clinton, Iowa Code of Ordinances. Move the ordinance under consideration, be placed on its final passage and adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Seeley.
Thank you, your honor. I have an ordinance for the first consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Yes, your honor. I would like to make a motion to remove the strike through the minimum lot area CR4 requirement. The reason for that is the C3 Central Business District actually goes to Fifth Street, encompasses residential dwellings, and removing that would make all those properties an illegal use under that zoning district. So I propose we leave it as it's written. It's always been in there. That way, those dwellings aren't illegal use.
Is it a motion?
Yeah, a second.
Is there any questions, or maybe, Matt, would you like to better explain that? Well, first off, everyone might want to reference where it is in the documents, so it might be easier to.
Sure.
It's actually the first page of the ordinance.
Yeah, so basically, under the C3, when we worked with Dan Fox on how to line this out, this was a, I missed this part, basically, we're under the minimum lot area, under section 1 amendment of section 159.045, and this is as councilmember Seeley highlighted, would be the ones that are on the fringe. It's more relevant to leave this in the document to protect those that are on the fringe of the downtown area. So then, basically, let's say for residential comma CR4, so if it's inside of that, that zone, they can then reference the R4 rules and regulations for that.
Yep. And then it goes to R2, and then it says CR1C, and then it says CR1A.
Each one sends.
Exactly that word.
Yep.
So just put it in perspective for you, where the Habitat Home was recently built, that falls within the zoning district, so if we didn't have that CR4, that dwelling wouldn't have been allowed to be constructed, basically, so. That's why I propose it stays there. I think it makes sense.
And then it'll remain, max height of the building will be 100 feet, and then max stories will be none for that part, and that will remain the same.
Okay, so we have an amendment to basically remove the strikeout that's there in the minimum lot area. Are there any other questions or discussion on it? So could we have a roll call vote on the amendment?
Councilmember Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you. So is there any other discussion now on the actual ordinances for considerations? Hearing none, could we have a roll call vote on the amended ordinance, please?
Councilmember Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, oh, sorry. Okay, an ordinance amending section 159 dash 045 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Clinton, Iowa, to revise height and area requirements applicable within the C3 Central Business District.
Thank you. Councilmember Shimmers.
I have an ordinance for the first consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Are there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending chapter 52 sewer use charge of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Clinton, Iowa, by amending the sewer use charges.
Thank you. Councilmember Oder.
Thank you, your honor. I have an ordinance for the first consideration.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Oder.
Yes.
Gasman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shimmers.
Yes.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending chapter 80.07 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Clinton, Iowa.
Thank you. Councilmember McGraw.
Thank you, your honor. I have a resolution approving purchase of downtown holiday lighting by the self-supporting municipal improvement district, Smith, too. I move the resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? Is there any discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?[1341.38]
Your honor, I have a resolution approving approving purchase of a Kawasaki mule by the self-supported municipal improvement district. I move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
Your motion and a second, is there any discussion? Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Odor.
Yes.
Gassman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yep.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Odor.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution approving final plat of Trinity Health plat one, I move it be adopted as read.
Second.
Your motion and a second, is there any discussion or questions? Could we have roll call then, please?
Councilmember Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Epstein.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Odor.
Yes.
Gassman.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Shemmers.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution setting public hearing on proposed sale of city-owned vacant lots Garfield Street and Thirty First Avenue North. I move this to be adopted as read.
Second.
Your motion and a second, is there any discussion? Councilmember Seeley.
Thank you, your honor, I forgot to check on this, did we, did, are we writing it in a manner in which it doesn't include like the bike path and stuff, is that, or how did you decide to handle that?
We're just moving the property line.
Okay.
Yup, so it doesn't.
Like up ten foot or something?
Yup.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other?
We did not do the.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other discussion or questions?
And we won't have to go through plating and all that surveying, okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Nope. Just want to make sure that bike trail stays there.
Just want to make sure, you're absolutely sure you're done.
Yep, I'm good now.
Okay. Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gassman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Odor.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Seeley.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution setting public hearing on the proposed sale of city-owned vacant lots eighty Twenty Fifth Avenue North, I move this be adopted as read.
Second.
Your motion and a second, is there any discussion? Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Alisi.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Odor.
Yes.
Gassman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Gassman.
Thank you, your honor, I have a resolution authorizing the issuance of nine million one hundred and five thousand dollars in general obligation capital loan notes series twenty eighteen and levying a tax for the payment thereof, I move this be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Odor.
Yes.
Gassman.
Yep.
Seeley.
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes motions, resolutions, and ordinances for tonight. We have no unfinished business, so I will turn to councilmember Alisi.
Your honor, I move we adjourn to seven PM, March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Your motion and a second, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Odor.
Yes.
Gassman.
Yes.
Thank you. We are adjourned, and we'll go immediately into the Clinton City Council Committee of the Hall for February twenty seventh. I will call that meeting to order, and we will have roll call whenever our clerk is ready.
Councilmember Gassman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
McGraw.
Here.
Alisi.
Here.
Shemmers.
Here.
Odor.
Here.
Thank you. Our first item tonight is an amendment to code chapter one fifty-nine point zero four eight. And the director of the Downtown Alliance, Karen Rowl, will address that.
She apparently will.
That's what it says, Karen.
Surprise.
We wrote it on the banner.
Across this winter, if you saw, we had the lovely skylines going across Fifth Avenue, and we have these cables that go across. We thought, well, why not use them all year round? So we have our music events, we love to put banners four foot by fifteen foot hanging from those cables. However, the city has a sign ordinance that says it can't go across city streets. So we're asking for a ordinance change so we can hang the banners. Um, the cost of these banners will offset the cost that we spend now on the small banners, and they'll probably get more bang for our buck, as we'd like to say, so we really like you to consider them. Anybody have any questions for me?
No, it makes sense to me, is this the modified ordinance or curtain ordinance that's included in our packet? Do you know, Lisa, is this part modified? This is, so you added in?
Yeah.
So it used to just say no sign or banner?
Correct.
Okay.
Or no, no sign or part, yeah.
So we're modifying an ordinance to allow ourselves to allow a banner to go up?
Yes.
Okay. Makes sense.
You're allowing yourselves to authorize that.
Okay.
Is is the way it's drafted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess the question.
On a case-by-case basis.
That's, that was my question, so it just can't be anywhere in town, we could, we have the final say on if there's gonna be a banner across the street.
Right.
So does the downtown need, every time they want to hang up their banner, need to come back to us, or how is that going to work? Or you're, are you gonna have a banner up?
They would, right, anytime they want to do it, they would bring it forward, and presumably if if it's one that has happened before, it should become rather routine. Um, if it's, you know, the alliance is bringing us the same same type of banner. The reason for the the restriction in the code is that there are sightline issues, and, you know, we always want to have the city engineer review the location, ensure there's no sightline problems, no safety problems, and uh, if, once this has been done, once or twice, it's gonna become rather rather routine for us to approve these, I'm assuming we could probably even do them on the consent agenda when we do them.
Okay.
It's just, you know, once we've got an area vetted for signs like this that we've already approved, and then the other aspect of it too is that the council, you know, we can't always assume it's gonna be Karen, who we trust, you know, who knows more or less what she's doing, you know, you never know what group might come forward.
Yeah, Tim Michael Rogan.
You know, and we just, you know, we just can't, we, you need to have control, I think, over not only the engineering part of it and the safety part of it, but this, but the purpose for which the sign is being placed, if it's, the wording says for a general, I can't remember which language I used, but it's sort of like a general public purpose that's suitable, the council approves of, and this type of thing is the sort of thing that presumably you would approve.
Come to us when they're doing the downtown events and say, we are gonna put this banner up, it's gonna be up for two months, and.
We set the timelines and.
So we could say that's just fine, or it can be up for the summer.
Right, so my question to you is, if you approve this today, then I need to come back and tell you when we're gonna put them up and how long they'll be up for? Okay, that's, I just want to make sure what my next step would be.
But I don't, yes, yeah. You wouldn't have to come to a big presentation, I don't think.
No, I was gonna say.
You used to scare me, you don't scare me anymore, Cody.
No, ba- basically, the ordinance that you're, basically, the ordinance that you're talking about gives the city council the right to say yes to having a banner.
Yes, sir.
We have to have the power to do that. Then, really, all you need to do is, once we've decided, you know, that your banner where you want to place them are no issues at all, you would notify the city you want it, we probably could come up with a form to fill out.
Yeah.
Similar to what we do for like a parade permit or some event permit, that you would fill it out, and then it would go on the consent agenda to get approved, that would be my assumption that we'd be able to do this.
Would we submit that with our application, like for the event?
Yeah, and it'd be like consent agenda, like Pat said, and that way also everybody knows, we have a heads up what's coming up, it's another way to notify folks, and we know what's on the sign, so some random sign doesn't just show up with, you know.
Say, I hate Clinton, we don't want that on the sign.
I would. Maybe bring the banners down here, hang them up tonight of the, we have to approve it, that way we can see what.
Yeah, crosses the whole center of the room.
I can do that.
It does actually.
You're gonna be one of my holders?
Well, I could be good advertising for you, we put it right back here.
Yep, I'll be glad to.
Yeah. Four by fifteen.
Four by fifteen, I'd be glad to.
It does actually require a submission of a PDF or something of what the sign will look like.
Yeah, I'll make sure that you have that.
I would envision that a memo to the staff would be the first step, and then that would come forward in the packet for a committee of the hall or something like that, and if, you know, nobody had any reason to discuss it, and it all looked good, staff was recommending, then it would be sent forward to the next council meeting for approval.
I was gonna say, we have permits for doing parades, we have permits for just about closing a street, I'm not sure why we just couldn't have a a simple little form that you would fill out with a sample, and then the staff can review it, and it gets on the consent agenda.
Actually, it doesn't even have to go on it. It could just be a procedure that the administration processes.
If that's what the council wants it to do.
Otherwise, it's like a, every time you have to have it on there, and if you get a window where it's a little short.
If you get your two weeks and you're out of order, and you've missed it.
But I mean, I, you know, we don't, we don't, we don't look at parade permits and all these other things.
Just let me know what my next step would be. Quit talking.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Cody.
You're welcome. See, I'm not that scary.
I'm not sure.
Rough crowd.
So, am I done? Thank you guys very much, I appreciate your.
But we didn't get a second, you'll notice.
Second.
Second.
We got, we got multiple seconds.
Okay.
I don't know who will show up in the minutes that gave the second, but.
Someone would.
So is there any other questions or discussion? Could we have roll call then, please?
Councilmember Odor.
Yes.
Gassman.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alisi.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Thank you. Our next item, sidewalk maintenance policy, Assistant City Engineer Zane Pennack.
And as they're walking up, I'll just kind of give a preemptive strike, so this is part, one of part, I guess we'd say five parts, that will all build towards the master, the transportation master plan, so as they get their stuff ready to go, we, the engineers been doing the work, they just updated me. And it took Seth, or it took Zane fifteen minutes to get that tie tied, so.
Fourteen and a half.
Fourteen and a half.
Okay, so, uh, as Matt said, we're gonna be talking about, um, this is kind of all alluding to the transportation master plan that we've been talking about for a while, and that we're gonna continue to talk about. Uh, as we've said before, there's lots of different facets to the transportation master plan, and as part of that, uh, this specific presentation, we're gonna be looking at the sidewalk maintenance. We're examining the city's existing sidewalk infrastructure, what we found out over the last couple of months about it, and then discuss some potential, or discuss a potential plan. So everybody knows about the pavement management plan, we've been work, we've been using that for a number of years now, uh, it's been really helpful, I talked about complete streets last September, I believe, sidewalk maintenance plan tonight, trail master plan, wayfinding, traffic state, safety plan, all in the coming months, so. Uh, there's two major codes to know about when we're talking about sidewalks in town, uh, one of them is the Iowa code, and the other one is our our city ordinance, it's been adopted. Uh, the Iowa code gives, puts the requirement on the city to maintain all the sidewalks in town, um, it also gives us the ability to tax the property owners through a special assessment. Uh, the city ordinance, our, well, our city ordinance puts the requirement on the citizens and the property owners to repair their sidewalks and maintain a safe, passable sidewalk within the town. Um, currently, we're not following either of these ordinances, uh, so, um, and in order to put together a proper transportation master plan, the engineering department believes that a sidewalk maintenance plan or sidewalk maintenance policy is key to put together an efficient and a good, a good working document for the transportation master plan. Um, in addition to this, uh, some of you, a few of the council members, I know Matt took part of it, I think Paul you did too, the walkability audit, which was, uh, last September, I believe, and that should have all been included in your council packet, so there's a little information from that as well. Yeah. Oh, and so about ten years ago, we used to follow the existing city ordinance, in the last ten years, um, we've kind of fallen away from it, it hasn't really been followed, it hasn't been implemented. Um, so we wanted to see where the city sidewalk infrastructure is currently at. So from our our survey, driving around town, checking out different areas, and then kind of taking that data, data, and blowing it up to extrapolate, this is what we came up with. Um, there's a hundred and seventy-three miles of existing sidewalk in town, that's just roads with sidewalks on them. Of that a hundred and seventy-three miles, there is forty miles of sidewalk that's in failed condition and needs to be replaced. Um, that's twenty-four percent of the town, and if we were gonna try to put a number together to fix all of that right now, um, it'd be about eight million dollars, just a little bit more, as you can see. That forty, that forty miles is pretty evenly distributed across the ten different areas that we surveyed, um, the ten areas being the ten recycling areas, it was easy to use that map to kind of divide things out and get semi-equal portions of the city. So in order to address those forty miles of bad sidewalk, uh, this is the plan that the engineering department would like to present, there was a couple of other ones presented in the report, but this is the one that we believe would be the, makes the most sense, and we'd see the most benefit from. So, uh, the process of the plan would, we would go out, um, it would start July two thousand nineteen, we'd give us a year to prepare, get everything in place, um, we would assess the area, and then we, all the areas, all the properties that have failed sidewalk, the property owners would get a letter. Um, the letter would allow the property owner sixty days to replace their sidewalk. Um, if they chose to replace the sidewalk at their own cost, in those sixty days, uh, there would be an incentive program that we could help pay for part of their concrete, so they'd get a little bit of a deal, um, they'd save a little bit of money that way. If they don't replace their sidewalk within sixty days, the city would then go ahead with a a program to replace all the failed sidewalk in the area as deemed per the assessment. And then that cost would be assessed to them through their property taxes, um, over ten years. Yeah, so, assess the, yup, and then we repeat this year after year, going from area to area to area, after ten years, we would have addressed the entire city, and then we'll go back and start again, uh, it'd be a yearly process, um, and that's, uh, hopefully, through that process, we can keep, um, we can get our sidewalks in a much better condition than what they are, we can improve the areas that are bad, and have a a plan set in place every year, and some some budgeted money to take care of that, and make sure we're addressing what we need to address per our Iowa code and the city ordinance. So we're asking for a majority of the council decision to help implement this policy. If you have any questions, I would love to answer them. I know there's, there's a lot of information in that report, and I glossed over a lot of it, um, I wanted to make this, to this, to the point, and hopefully.
Well, I'd like to start out, I think, uh, Clinton has a huge amount of senior citizens, and a lot of them have limited income, so one of your proposals here was to have a an entirely city-funded project, and that way, everybody that lives in Clinton would have to pay us, you know, a dollar tax or two dollar, whatever your number, magic number is, but then, that way, it it helps every one of us, we use everybody's sidewalks from time to time for whatever the project, and so it's much more easy for you not to have another reason why you hate Clinton, if you had a program like that. I know you showed examples of everything but that in here.
Uh, that one was included in there, entirely city-funded approach.
Well, I mean, as number five, but you don't show any cities doing it.
Right, it's, it's a very unusual thing, there was one city, I believe, Waqee, uh, they completely replaced all of their sidewalk, but then after that, it was up to the city. Yeah, there's nobody else that does it, and I think one of the issues is, um, it it's expensive, and then it all brings the city to a whole lot of liability by taking all the responsibility of the sidewalks, everything that's not in good condition.
So, so then, then what do you do about your own sidewalks, the city sidewalks, you're responsible for them as well, aren't you?
Right.
So.
That's a much smaller percentage.
It's not even addressed in here, then?
Yeah, that, that, I just want to address that, because I don't want to get too far off in the weeds, but the city sidewalks, of course, are in those ten areas.
Exactly.
And if there are, if there is a sidewalk that is abutting a city-owned property, then that would be budgeted for as well and replaced. So we've, we've gone around town the last ten years and replaced some of the city sidewalks, of course, there are other ones that that the city would be responsible for, if they are the adjacent property owner. And the same difference, if we go out and inspect this general region of the town, the sidewalks that are next to the city-owned lots would obviously be included in that year's budget. So we talked to the, uh, legal counsel on on this plan a while ago, and several times, and there was some concerns, a couple of concerns that, um, that we had with just, because it does seem, I agree, it seems like it's the most fair, just the city just constructs all of the sidewalks and, uh, adjusts everyone's property taxes accordingly, but we're gonna get, if that's the case, we're gonna be receiving hundreds of phone calls per day, well, when's the city gonna replace my sidewalk, if we just abolish our own ordinances and make ourselves responsible? And furthermore, it is a liability issue where we think that we'll probably have a vastly increased number of of, uh, lawsuits against the city if people are tripping, and all of a sudden, only the city is responsible, so it's an easy target, the city's an easy target in that case, so I certainly think a balancing is is what we've proposed, where the city offers an incentive to pay for a portion of the sidewalks, but that the onus of of repair is still partially on the abutting property. But that said, the majority of the council can decide as they wish, and we will implement whatever plan, as long as we have a plan, that's the most important thing.
Well, you already have a liability, you have the pavement management program, and we have a list of every street, and the worst ones to the best ones, and if somebody trips or falls or bumps their head on the sewer, you're still responsible for it, so I think, I don't think it's a comparable. But even so, but, you know, if you if you really think that you have a liability issue, your number three, does that include any interest to the property owner if you let him pay forty to two hundred dollars a year for ten years to replace the sidewalk? I mean, that's sort of, that's sort of a way out, but, you know, if if you're gonna just go send somebody a letter and say, in sixty days, you're gonna have to spend, you know, two, three thousand dollars or whatever, maybe five thousand dollars on replacing your sidewalk, there's gonna be a lot of more empty homes in here.
Yeah. Well, this is just our, this is really just our opinion, and certainly, the engineering department does not want to, uh, does not want people to move.
Yeah.
And and it's our interest to get the city sidewalk program to an acceptable nature.
So.
If that, if that means the city pays for all of it, and we include that as part of next year.
I can compromise, I'm just saying, okay, and number three, is that, is that just, uh, interest-free, is all I was asking?
No, well, it could be, you could set it at whatever.
Well, it doesn't.
Usually, the interest, or the, uh, the bond, say we had a ten-year bond with interest, we would charge that same amount of interest?
Which would be what, three percent or two percent?
Generally, we add two to three percent, but you could make it interest-free, I'm sure.
But see, see, all I'm saying is, that's more easy to accept as a senior citizen in a house that they just want to live out the rest of their life in without having one more bill attached to them that they can't afford to pay, that's all I'm saying.
I agree.
There's a lot of that, and people just seem to close their eyes to it, like everybody's.
Yeah, the sidewalks are hard, you can't walk over some of the sidewalks in time without tripping or falling if you're not paying attention, and and the special assessment code of Iowa allows up to ten years payback, and the city can set any interest they want, and we would engage with bond counsel on that before we entered into a special assessment program for any, for any type of project. And I think, I've consulted with them before, and, uh, has zeros an option.
Well, see, I don't have to worry about this, because mine are all replaced after that roadwork, you know, we had up there, they crushed them all when they ran up and down doing the sewers, but that's another story.
Well, the city paid for all those.
Well, one even got pulled out twice. Alliant, Alliant put a sidewalk in, and then, well, BWX or whatever they are, they tore it out the next week. But anyhow, all I'm saying is, I mean, I'm supportive of your three or a five, but I'm not supportive of just sending somebody a letter and saying, in sixty days, go find whoever you can, you know?
Oh.
And the other thing is, if you, if you really wanted to make it work, you would find some contractors that'll put in sidewalks for a certain amount, just not rip off our senior citizens that don't know what a yard of cement's worth and things like that, I mean, you'll, you'll know it'll happen.
Well, that's exactly right, and we, I think, we did, number three was our suggested plan, actually, and and it would involve a yearly city bid, where we solicit bids for a certain amount of sidewalk, whatever that may be, whichever homeowners didn't get their sidewalk repairs done, and it would be up to eight hundred thousand dollars per year, so we're gonna get some good bids from qualified contractors, and we would make sure that we inspect all the projects as well. But I think we can all agree that the sidewalks are in terrible shape, and we need some sort of plan.
I agree.
Eleven-year plans better than none. We just need some sort of council direction or decision to.
Well, the way it is now, it's gotta be a complaint basis, so then you know it's your neighbor complaining about it, and you're mad at them the rest of your life, so. You know, I I I think I I'm, I can live with number three, if, you know, if there's little to no interest, and you give them ten years to pay for it, and you find qualified contractors to put in the sidewalk, I think it'd be a great plan, and then you don't have to worry about your liability.
Jason, the corner lots, the accessibility, um, how is that gonna get handled? That's a.
The corners are the city's responsibility, the ADA corners, those are all, that's part of a different.
There's a whole lot of them.
Well, generally speaking, those have been replaced, but those poor folks have twice as much, if not more, sidewalk than everybody else, and they're, you're gonna stick, where they're gonna get stuck with it?
Well, you, it could be whatever you want it to be, Cody, you can, you can, the city can pay for half of a corner lot, if that's your one amendment policy that way.
I don't know.
Well, you know.
How many corner lots do you own? I own one. I have two corner lots.
I don't know, I guess I'd have to go count them, but I've got one property in particular that I think it's two hundred foot by two hundred, it's huge, and I'm thinking, gee whiz, what's this gonna cost me when they come around?
I want his to be first.
I I I guess, I have to agree with councilmember Gassman, I I have a real concern about more burden on the taxpayers, I realize we need sidewalks, but we're this town is struggling as far as people being able to pay their bills, so that, there's an issue. I also have a problem with the sixty days, because if you go through an area and you come up with so many sidewalks to be done, we only have a limited number of contractors in this community. Because I I see the city projects not getting done, because they don't have enough workers on some of the projects to finish them. I remember in ninety-eight, when I bought a house, the city had a sidewalk inspection program, I couldn't find a contractor that was free for at least six months to fix the piece of sidewalk. Because they were so far behind, so I'm not sure the sixty day is realistic.
No, that won't work.
The sixty days is, that's something that can be changed, that was the number that we threw out, we've used on letters recently in the, in the last year or so.
But not, you're not doing a sidewalk program where you're doing a lot of it, you're doing isolated incidents, but there again, how can somebody come up with a couple thousand dollars to pay this guy in sixty days from now that I wasn't planning to spend money for a sidewalk? I'm just, I have a real hard time with sticking the people with more, more debt, and then we had the people that really luck out that have no sidewalk.
Yeah.
We have areas of this town that should have a sidewalk, that don't have a sidewalk, that I actually think are more important than some of the ones that we got that are broken.
Right, and that's another issue we've talked about and looked into, if infill is a problem that we need to address, but that's more of a construction, that's not a maintenance issue, so that's something we'll be looking at on, as part of the trails master plan.
I'm just saying, but, you know, so those people, I think, you know, they're, they're sitting there laughing, I don't even have a sidewalk, and these poor people over here, that nobody walks on their sidewalk, they gotta pay for it, so. Yeah, I'm not sure, my opinion, I'm not sure you want to make a decision on which one of these you want to do tonight, I I think, but I'd love to have some of the public input into this to see what the people think. You know, instead of just in fifteen minutes here, all of a sudden, we've decided to go out and assess the public for a project, you know, and like I said, I'm not against sidewalks, but I'm just, I'm just concerned about how do we pay for them that's fair to the people, because I I really think a lot of them are hurting financially right now.
I would agree. I mean, you gotta think about our roads, for instance, our pavement management program, how, how long has that been going on? I mean, so everything takes time, so you can't just go to someone and say, oh, well, you gotta spend a thousand bucks on this, you know, there could be baby steps involved too, you know? There could be baby steps involved too, you know, and.
Well, bottom line, you need a sidewalk project or they'll always look the same.
Yeah.
So I think you should push something forward, and then if you wanna have the, put something in the paper to have the citizens come to one of our meetings while this is traveling through to give input. I mean, I'm for that too, but I think they all want to have good sidewalks.
Why don't, why don't we hold a public input meeting? Because a lot of people just don't come to our council meetings.
Oh, look.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the audience. You know, I think it's, you know, a lot of people are intimidated about coming to City Hall. You know, we, we have public input meetings when we do projects all over town that, you know, let, let's have something, let's have a public, public meeting where people can come in and talk about what they think is fair for paying for it, or let's hear what their concerns are.
I, I think we're gonna get some negative feedback.
Get negative.
But there will be some positives as well, I suspect, but. Um, I remember when we talked about this six months ago or something, we were, we decided that if we're gonna go around and assess people, that we were gonna first make sure all our stuff was up to par, and I don't think that's happened yet.
Right, so the, when I presented back in September, I had assessed everything in the city, that all the city-owned sidewalks, and that's included in the, the report here. Um, their current conditions and whatnot. Uh, no, we, they haven't been addressed yet.
Yeah.
Um, but.
What's the cost of the city to fix all of our sidewalks?
Yeah. Do you guys remember that discussion?
Start on, on a lot of that, just we, we've replaced a bunch of the failed sidewalks and the trail up on Riverfront. We started marking out the sidewalk next to City Hall parking lot, then we decided we gotta replace the parking lot anyway. And over the past ten years, we have replaced some of the sidewalks, but we haven't done it all at once. Like we were telling Councilman Gaspin, if we're doing a ten-year program, in the city, the city would be part of that program.
So if the city gets ten years, does a homeowner get ten years?
He's just saying.
It depends on if you own, if you own lots that are dispersed throughout the city, so you could give them ten years. Seems like a ridiculous time to, to have, once you've identified a sidewalk as failed, I mean, a year, something like Mayor Volovich said, sixty days is ludicrous, but something like a year to replace your sidewalk that's obviously failed is probably fair.
Well, I'm worried about the payoff as, as opposed to.
No, the payoff is a ten-year.
Yeah, but I'm, I worry about somebody even finding a contractor. Unless you came up with, we go out and sidewalks are gonna be done by three, let's say, three contractors that have bid the project for the city. You know what the price is, they're all doing it for the same square, so much a square foot.
That'd be easier.
You know, and I don't know if that's legal to do something like that, but then, you know.
That is the assessment program, that's how that would work. We'd bid that out publicly, and we could hire three contractors and, and we could construct them, and then it would be a ten-year assessment program.
But then, then you would know what the cost is as opposed to calling six, six guys and they all give you a different number, and some people don't know what's a good price, what's a bad price, and whether they do good work or, okay, they do it wrong, who's responsible, who's gonna fix it? You know, they'd have to be up to the city standard as opposed to, you know, what somebody out of, working out of the back end of their station wagon came up with.
I mean, anybody who does sidewalk in town has to come in and get a permit, and we inspect all of that.
What's that cost?
Huh? Fifteen dollars, ten, ten dollars a, every fifteen feet.
Yeah, no, we.
We're gonna make them replace their sidewalk and charge them for the permit, eh?
I hear what you're saying. We're, we're not against the people though, Cody, we're not. We're, we're trying to devise a plan to make the sidewalk network in town passable and acceptable instead of deplorable. And whatever, whatever is decided by the council, we will follow. We don't think that inaction is a good action, so.
No, I, I.
Public input meeting and then decide after that.
But I think we should have some opinion. You never know what people might, because I'd like to hear what people, if they were told they had to replace their sidewalk, what's their response is, I can't afford it, I need some time, you know, about, you know, I wouldn't know who to call.
Or even if they know that they're liable, if somebody falls under sidewalk, that could cost them a lot more money than.
I think a letter to a person is sort of uh, not helping with the problem. I think if the letter said the city could construct your sidewalk at this price, because we've received bids from ten qualified contractors, rather than just have sixty days to replace your sidewalk.
This price, this is your payback, this is what it equates to a month. I mean, I think people would be more receptive to that than.
Well, that, I, I worry about that we have a little better control over the price than too, that it doesn't get out of hand by, you know, if you're, if, oh, I only got nine more days to get it done, so I'll pay this guy five times the normal rate because I can get it done in the that period of time that I'm allowed, you know, I'm just, people read letters differently, you know, some, some ignore them.
If, I think that a good, a good way to go about it might be that if we start out with the special assessment program, and say, I got a letter that said, your sidewalk is deficient for fifteen feet, it's marked, you'll be included as part of a, a program. The city will replace your sidewalk next year, you will pay this amount over a ten-year period, you can pay it early if you want. And on top of that, the city will fund X amount of that.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of, you know, instead of saying you have sixty days, if you wanna get a discount, you know, everyone can have the discount, everyone can take ten years if they want. It's not as heavy-handed and it seems like a generally compromising way to do it.
It's customer-friendly.
Yeah, it's way more customer-friendly. If there's a serious safety issue, then of course, there's, there's other measures that can be taken. I, I do, we start out giving people a year, or I mean, give people ten years to pay back X amount.
Well, even giving, because I, I can't imagine us getting that much done in one building season anyway. People need some time to pay for stuff, you just don't, you know, the city doesn't really take credit cards as such without having a fee on, another fee to use the credit card.
Yeah.
I, I think the zones are gonna be super important too, because, you know, just like on the pavement management plan, things get put on there based on priority with public input, with city engineers' input, but what's gonna mean if we all have bad sidewalks, where does it start first? And so, I think we do by zone, what's that?
The most traveled.
Yeah, and we do it by zones, and that way, if you, if you look at the great job that the folks did on the truncated domes and on all the sidewalks that meet the intersections, those guys, and they're, and that's a lot more work than just the sidewalks, because they're digging down and there's drainage. They, they did, they made quick work, quality work, real quick, but it was all focused, and that's the same thing we could do here too. Focus plan along with a focus payment piece, I think is what I'm.
You're doing streets every year.
Yeah.
Assuming you're doing the curves.
Right.
Part of that, including the sidewalks at the same time, how do you get the cheaper rate off that contract, because you're curbs anyways.
Right.
Just follow the streets.
Yeah, I agree with that.
So, I'm hearing a motion, we'll move forward with a public input meeting, and then we'll bring this back, we'll bring number three back for further discussion at the.
And whatever comes out of the meeting.
Sure, and we'll bring back the uh.
Any concrete idea that comes back.
And we'll bring it, we'll bring it back realizing that we're not intending on, we're not intending on asking someone to replace a sidewalk in sixty days.
No ask.
Look, Karen, we need, we need, we need to come up here.
Yeah.
Because the people at home can't hear you. The people that won't come to City Hall are at home watching.
So, we have some commercial buildings that have trees that have buckled the sidewalk. So is that really the property owner's problem, or is that the city's problem? And who's gonna pay for it?
Who planted the tree?
The city. In this mid-d street. Not on Second Street. No, I'm just asking, because, you know, I'm gonna have property owners that are gonna say, well, why do I have to pay for that sidewalk that's buckled? Because it's the city tree that buckled, and the city won't take down the tree because the tree's alive.
We'll have to address that. We don't wanna go cutting down a street either.
I can think of a few.
Downtown looks so nice with the trees.
Report to Randy Pennock after this meeting.
Okay, I will. Thank you.
I have one more question or maybe something for consideration. The special assessment, if you sell your property, does that have to be paid at time of sale or does it transfer?
Usually you have to pay for it.
You have to pay for it.
Usually you have to pay up your special. Because it's technically a lien.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. That's another thing we consider. What?
Why wouldn't you, you know, to sell the property, you'd be glad to pay the lien off.
Sometimes those, sometimes those, some of those other liens, they hang on and they go over to the sale.
I didn't know if this was different somehow or something.
No, this one. We just had that case and a couple other things that came up where the lien actually trailed the, the sale and it wasn't paid off.
Huh.
Which it should be.
Yeah.
When do we wanna have the public meeting and where? Like, is that like in the month at City Hall, or do you wanna have somewhere else?
Let, let's have it like at the Erickson Center. And why don't we wait for a month, let the weather get nicer so we don't have, you know, we get out of this. Thursday, we're supposed to have snow today, we had record-setting highs, we'll get into more normal temperatures.
Cool. Appreciate all the work, guys.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Zane, you did excellent job on this.
Okay, we'll move on to item number three, which is employee retention.
So as Mike Brown walks to the mic, sir, just introduce him, introduce this topic. So, a while back, we had the conversation at um, this table, this half-table on, you know, retention and, and keeping folks uh, that work for the city, um, in the city, and what incentives we could have to have them stay in the city, and so uh, Mike's been in a, a long time working on this and coordinating with Pat O'Connell um, on this piece, so we wanna be able to open up for a discussion for you tonight and get some good discussion going. With that, Mr. Brown.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mike Brown, Fire Chief. Uh, thanks to Jason and Zane for getting all the controversy over.
Yeah.
This'll be easy now. So, this has been a, a long time coming, and quite honestly, um, I should've been before you a couple of years ago with this, because it's just been an issue that continues to fester and not get any better. Um, so what I've presented to you is uh, basically four different recommendations that all go to the same topic. I've heard this topic discussed up here at the dais before, and how do we grow our city, how do we get people to come here? And especially when our own employees aren't here, so. Um, recommendation A is very similar to uh, the agreement that the police department is already using. Uh, very similar to uh, uh, a very comparable fire department in Burlington, they're using something very similar. And basically, we're saying if you're gonna come here to work, we're going to spend this amount of resources to uh, get you ready to come to work, and if you're gonna leave, you're gonna pay us back, and I think that's only fair. Sadly, we can't, you know, we pay two thousand dollars for a pre-employment physical, we don't get that back because that's part of the job offer. Uh, we buy them gear, that's three grand, we really don't get that because that's part of our contract, says you gotta give them the gear to work in. But we're training them, and I think that's a piece that we can get back. And this gentleman that just left, he was, he really wanted this job. I, I believe what he, what he said is, man, I really wanna come to work here. I don't think I'm ever gonna get hired in Davenport. Well, they changed their mind and decided to offer him the job. I think had he signed this agreement, and had he moved to Clinton, I don't think he'd have left, because he didn't wanna, he was not gonna wanna pay that money back. He wanted to be a firefighter. Well, he just gives a chance to go back and work, uh, you know, six blocks from where he lives. I don't blame him, but um, it's at our cost and our, our, for, my, our management staff is frustrated. I mean, you spend all this time training. Uh, even the, you know, the union guys that work with them and get to know them, and then they leave, so. Uh, I think, I think recommendation A is pretty simple. Uh, Pat's looked at it and said that it, it works and, and you know, if somebody leaves, we're gonna make them pay us back. If they try to stiff us, we're gonna call their new boss and say, guess what, your new employee uh, is, is, has not paid his bills, and that's part of our rules and regulations, and I'm assuming any other department has that similar uh, rules and regulations. Recommendation B is not, I'm not gonna win a popularity contest with this. Um, but it is probably the right and the prudent thing to do for our taxpayers. Um, we're asking people to join our organization, the city of Clinton, whether it be the police department, the fire department, the public works. Come join us. And I think by saying come join us, we have the right to say, and really be a part of us, live here. Because our taxpayers are gonna pay your wages for the rest of your career, hopefully, a long, long, long career. Um, state law says we can only go so far with that. We can, we can't say you have to live in Clinton, Iowa. But we've gotta say something reasonable. So to me, ten miles uh, within our, our, outside of our city is reasonable. It's what it used to be prior to nineteen ninety-one when it was uh, brought to the voters for one person. Um, and I understand the reason behind that. I don't have any fault with that, why it was done then. I, I understand why the voters voted for it. But I think it's time now, it's, it's twenty-some years later, we really need to look and change this. I've had some uh, conversations in the last few days with uh, with other folks, uh, some union members that said, isn't that being a little restrictive? Is it gonna limit our candidate pool? You know, if a guy, if I offer him a job and he goes, well, I'm not gonna take it because I gotta live within ten miles. Good, because I, I don't want to here and leave three months later. It's, it's a waste of our time. One offer, one suggestion that was made today was, why can't it be fifteen miles? Um, and, but still, you can't live in any other incorporated town. So, you know, that, like, say you get a farmer from Goose Lake or Charlotte that wants to work here, and we've got some that work for the city, but they still want a farm that they could do that. I, I'm okay with that, but I just think if you live in DeWitt, I love DeWitt, great town, I love Leclerc, but if you live in either of those two towns, you're not gonna shop here. You're not gonna come here on your days off. You're gonna go to the Quad Cities or Dubuque or somewhere else, so. I think we've gotta encourage our employees uh, to live in or close to Clinton. I, I would, I wish that we could say in, honestly. Uh, recommendation C is a little uh, is uh, probably a little controversial, and it, it's getting outside of the box a little bit, which we've gotta do now and then. Um, how do we, I mean, obviously, we're saying, hey, we'll give you a job and we will pay you. That should be encouragement enough to move to Clinton, but um, how could we try to entice those current city employees that live outside of Clinton to come back? Do we incentivize it? Do we say, hey, we'll, we'll give you a, a tax abatement for three years, fifty percent, or we'll give you a thousand dollars a year for five years to be put towards the purchase of a home in Clinton, become a taxpayer. Uh, we'll, we'll recoup other tax money. I think we've gotta come up with something to try to bring some of these employees back uh, to where, where we're from. And the fourth item is, it's not A, B, C, or D, it's just, it's item four, but um, right now, we have our, our current requirements say that you have to be a firefighter one, firefighter two, and a paramedic within one year. State law says that we have to give an employee a one-year probationary period. We can't stretch that probationary period to two years. But we could say that you're gonna be a firefighter one and two within one year, and we'll give you two years to become a paramedic, and if you don't meet that requirement, that you will, you'll sign this agreement that says you'll resign. Because you're not gonna be able to do the job. The reason that is, okay, we've got a, a young man now that, that's on our list. He's an EMT, he's not a paramedic. Local kid, a great local family. He doesn't start uh, paramedic school until August, so if you had that two years, you could actually offer the guy a job. He can do mo- he can do BLS calls, he can go in and fires and ambulance calls. He's just not a paramedic kid. He's gonna work with a paramedic. And um, once he got through school, then we've got a valued employee that came from Clinton and uh, probably gonna stay in Clinton, and that's a great deal. Um, the other thing is, is perhaps we should just consider saying, hey, we'll, we'll hire local people and we'll, we'll pay for your, your paramedic school. Now you're gonna sign a five-year agreement, because you're gonna pay us that back if you leave too. Uh, which is very similar to what PD does with ILA. That, that's a lot more expensive to go out there, obviously. Chief, is it like twenty-one or twenty-two grand they owe you?
Yes.
Right out of that? So, I mean, that would get it up to about the same amount of money. When, when I became Fire Chief, one of the questions on the promotional stuff was, how are you going to address diversity? And in Clinton, Iowa, how do we address, you know, our local inner-city kids that probably don't have ten grand laying around to go to paramedic school? Maybe we try to, to uh, you know, let, let's get local people into our job and keep them here, so. There's kind of four things. There's a lot of stuff, I understand. It, it's, it's late coming, I apologize that. It should've been a couple of years ago, we just we can't do it anymore. We've gotta, we've all decided that what we're doing is broken and it's not working as far as retention of employees. You know, there, there's other reasons. They go to Davenport. Uh, we had a guy that was an engineer. Uh, four or five-year guy, already been promoted to engineer, walked in the door at Davenport, made more money as a beginning fire. So, that's a, that's a draw, i- if money is your, your objective. Um, they don't ride the ambulance. They have the same amount of firefighters per capita, but they don't have to go to, on ambulance calls, that's a big deal. You know, so their workload's a lot less. But we can, you know, I still feel that we have a great job here. We're a great city here, there's a lot of reasons to bring people here. Um, we just gotta, we gotta get a little leverage to keep them here.
Mike, does Davenport have a, a contract they have to sign to be hired there?
No. Nor do they have, if I'm not mistaken, they don't have any requirements. GED gets you in the door. No. Nor do they have, if I'm not mistaken, they don't have any requirements. GED gets you in the door, if you can pass the test.
You don't have to be a paramedic there either, do you?
No. Same with Iowa, but, but they love to hire our guys, because they're already paramedics and they're trained.
They're already trained.
And they say thank you, because you gave us these great employees. They love the employees that have come from our department. So that's, it gives you a warm feeling, but not really.
How long do you think to become a paramedic?
If you start in August, you'll, you'll be done with your class the following May, and then you have to do your testing and stuff. So about a year.
And where do you have to go?
Sadly, Eastern Iowa Community College offers it, but only at Scott Community. So we, you can't do it here in town. There's a lot of them that go to Piasta, to North, Northern Iowa Community College. And then there's some Illinois programs, Trinity and Blackhawk, I think, maybe they're the same ones. So, and then there's an accelerated program at the University of Iowa, which we've hired some guys out of. They, they, they really get a, a good education there. It's really fast. It's a little pricey, but it's about five months, I think.
You can become a paramedic quicker, but it costs you more.
Costs you more money. Well, you gotta live there, because you gotta go full-time. So, um, so, you know, I'm bringing this to you for, for some suggestions, or where do we go from here? I don't know.
Well, do, how about this? Since you gave us so many different recommendations, how about we take each one at one at a time and see what the council's thoughts are? Let's go back to number, let's go back to A, about the employees entering into an agreement.
I like this one.
I do too. That's not uncommon around the country, quite frankly.
I think A is awesome.
I like A.
We're gonna get a motion to move that forward.
The reemission to move that forward to develop a, a contract? We got a motion, a second, any other questions or discussion? Could we have roll call on that?
Councilmember Gasson.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alcee.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to B. Update our city ordinance to make the, or require the city employees to live within ten miles, and that they can't live in any incorporated, in, in incorporated, so I get that un-twisted out of there.
And this would be all new employees?
New hires. This, this is all relating to.
So the existing employees are okay. You're not gonna make them move.
Everyone's grandfathered in.
Good question came to me today. So what if, what if, what if an employee that lives in DeWitt decides to sell his house and buy another house in DeWitt? Assume you were hired under the twenty-mile thing, you're still good as long as.
Yeah, you're, you're still a grandfathered employee.
But I'd sure like to encourage you to come to.
Well, that's coming up in another one here, but we, we're gonna work on this first one about trying to get, trying to get them to live closer, or you can't live in another city.
This is within the corporate limits of Clinton, so ten miles out, okay.
It could be Clinton County.
Good example, today I Googled, and this isn't crow fly, this is driving time. Three forty-four Third Avenue South, Central Fire Headquarters, to Spawn and Rose in Charlotte, twenty point zero miles. But again, that, I, I think we'd have to look at it, you know, with Google Earth. Jason pulled up something the other day with, you can just do straight line. That's how it's supposed to be figured. So, as a new employee came in, you'd simply show them, hey, this is the limit. That's what we do now. We show them the twenty-mile radius. This is where you can live.
Now, do you go twenty miles from the Central Fire, or twenty miles outside corporate limits?
From, from the place you work. And so that gets a little confusing for us with three different facilities. So, well, if I'm living, working at Lyons, you know, I live north. So, in this, we, we put that, it would be police headquarters, fire headquarters, because that's where you get hired from. So.
How far is it from DeWitt, or from the Central Fire to the very edge of the Clinton city limits?
Probably.
It's gotta be pushing.
Six miles.
Six miles?
Yeah.
But as you go farther north, or limits come in a little bit as you go out west.
I think Goose Lake falls in the, in ten miles, in the, in the ring. Well, it does, because.
But not from central?
Well.
As the crow flies.
As the crow flies.
As, as crow flies, probably, close. But I don't, is, is Goose Lake incorporated?
Yes, yeah.
So, again, if you live out in the country.
You could live in Elvira.
So, you know, you know, some of the guys, some of the, the people that have, that have talked about this in a little negative tone. And so, at least we need to get them in Clinton County. I agree, because one of the problems is if you live in Leclerc, and you get a job at Davenport Fire, you don't necessarily sell your house, because you're in Scott County. We had a guy today that didn't come to work, because he's on jury duty, at Scott County. You know, that, that's crazy. You don't live, you don't work in Scott County, you work for the City of Clinton.
But if it's in Scott County, is the crow flies going south still? Don't we?
Well, I think, I think, yeah, ten miles, we'd be okay. I think if it went any further, you'd have to, you'd have to clarify that it was Clinton County.
Cause I was gonna say, is it, the, the WOBSY's closer than ten miles on a straight line, isn't it?
I don't know, from, I don't think so. I think we did a map, arc.
It's close.
It's close, yeah. But you'd have to live in the WOBSY. Or in the bottoms. You're gonna need a good houseboat.
I, I like this as well. I'm just uncertain on the exact miles that's acceptable.
We could provide you, if we move this forward, we'll provide you a map.
I could give you a ring with, with ten miles and a ring with fifteen.
Yeah, and should it be from like central, or should it just be within ten miles of Clinton city limits?
Well, the city limits goes all the way to Lomond.
I know, and that's why I think it's more than six miles from one end to another.
If you was ten miles from city limits.
You what?
If you, if it was ten miles from city limits, you could live in DeWitt, because our, our.
But, but if we, if we left it at the twenty, and it was at the city limits, you'd almost be out in Grand Mound or somewhere farther before, and you'd still be able to make the twenty. There has to be a common, common point.
You know, when, when the, the, the issue that changed it in nineteen ninety-one, or I think it actually went on about two years, was, was a, a city employee was marrying a gentleman that was a farmer. And his family farm was more than ten miles, less than twenty. And we needed to change this, because he can't get married, he, he, his homestead is on this farm. I get it. But, so, I mean, maybe, maybe you do try to think of the farmer, I don't know. We've got some really good city employees that, that actually are farmers as well, so I'm not trying to make it overly restrictive. I just think we need to get them outside. We need to have them, we need them to come to Clinton to shop, and to go to the movie, and to go out to eat, and not always elsewhere.
And walk on our sidewalks.
But, but even better, and walk on our sidewalks, and put their kids in school here, and marry somebody local and all that stuff, so they get tied into our community.
Well, keep in, keep in mind, what we're talking about only applies to new hires.
Yeah.
Right.
So, it's not anybody that's existing, so.
Just to put it into perspective, how quick it changes, when I started in nineteen eighty-seven, we had one employee on the Fire Department that didn't live in Clinton. He lived just on the edge of Lomond, because it was his wife's family farmstead, or, or land. But that was it. Out of forty-five people, there was only one that didn't live in Clinton. Wow. I mean, it changed pretty quick.
What do you have now?
Yeah, how many now don't?
Uh, about sixty percent don't.
And that's since you started? You ran them all out, Mike?
You're right, it might have been me. Probably was. No, it, it's, it's really, it's, it's amazing. It's, it's, uh, and again, I, I get it, you're from, the one guy I talked to today said, hey, I, I grew up in Comanche. I wanna be a career firefighter. I knew I wanted to work for Clinton Fire Department. But my plan was to always live in Comanche and raise my kids in Comanche, just where I was raised. And then he married somebody from outside of Clinton, and he had to move to Clinton anyway, so.
So are you saying somebody moved here because their wife lived here?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
Or used to live here.
We got one on our side.
It's funny.
But I will say, B is also a common practice around the country. So, even when I went through my younger days, I had to move within certain limits. If, if you want the job, you do what it takes.
You do what it takes, yeah.
And, and this is not to say that we wouldn't have an exception to every policy. So if somebody came in and their farmstead was, you know, ten point five miles, and Mike wanted to hire him, we'd sit and talk to them about that. We're not gonna shoot them away, but the intent is to, to come to the city or get closer to the city, so. And so, out of the seventy-eight that we don't have live, not firemen and fire people, but of the, we have seventy-eight that don't live, but thirty-three of them live in Comanche. And I consider them our next-door neighbors anyway. So that, that leaves the other, you know, half that are living elsewhere. So that's why we just wanna, we're looking at now to the next ten to fifteen years, to where we can come back to that, where we have ninety percent are in the city, and not, you know, keep dropping.
I agree.
I mean, I don't have so much hard room with Comanche. I know those people still shop here and hang out here, but it's, it's just the point.
So do you need a motion to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Their motion is second to move B forward. So if, if there's no other discussion, could we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gasson.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
McGraw.
Yes.
Alcee.
Yes.
Shemmers.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, the third one, item C. Now, this is one that's probably a little harder, needs a lot more discussion, about the retention of current employees, and to get them to move into Clinton.
Yes, so, all in the same vein, this is the folks that are great workers, they show up for work every day, and they make the, the city better. We'd like to encourage them to come on over here, whether that would be, you know, finding a vacant parcel to build a house on, and then there's abatements available for that, as far as giving them a type of stipend to come in and move into the city. Because once again, if you take, if you take half the, the other half of the seventy-eight, and all of a sudden you have forty other families that now show up that were city workers inside of Clinton, and then let's say half have kids, and put them in school, as you start to see the momentum build there. So, you know, what would it take to get the folks to come on in, to incentivize them to do that? Especially when we start looking at some of these gut rehabs and other things we're gonna start doing. If you have some younger families and younger folks that are starting out, what a great place to start. You could have a house that's all been redone, you know, a, a starter home, per se. And not just, you know, we want to encourage all folks to do this, but just, what, what is it gonna take to turn a corner, to, you know, come out of Leclerc or come out of another place to be here and then stay for quite a long time?
I think this needs a lot more discussion, not just pertaining to folks that work for the city, but the guy that works at ADM, or that lives in Leclerc, or Equastar, or Lyondell. How do you get them to, to actually live here? And you've got like a, for instance, tax abatement, which, you know, I don't know what our capabilities are there, but, you know, I'd be willing to discuss, oh, you're a new family moving to Clinton, you can get a three-year abatement. If you purchase a home, you know, or something like that. I'd be willing to discuss that, and I think it would tie into this as well, but I don't know how that would all work, and what we could afford to do, and.
We'd have to remember also, they would be employees. If they are employees, we're gonna be withholding social security and stuff on those items.
Yep.
Yep. Oh, if we give them bonus or something.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, I appreciate that, Cody. I think that's something, I never even thought of, yet, others. There's a lot of people. We need to get people to come to Clinton.
Why would?
Well, I like your idea, yeah, yeah.
You know, for my, my selfish part of this is what a great recruitment tool, when you're putting an ad in the paper for the police or fire, Public Works, or whoever, to go, hey, not only will we pay you and give you benefits and all this, but if you'll move to our community, we'll, we'll do this. We'll, we'll give you this much money towards a house, or give you a tax abatement or whatever. That's awesome.
Matt, you just got that.
We've had some of that.
For Homebase Iowa, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. And that's what, a three or five year?
Three years. Fifty percent.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
I mean, so something like that might be.
But we, we were even talking as much as, you know, with the vacant lots, if, you know, it, it can, here's a vacant lot for a dollar, if you sign a contract to build a house.
Well, what if they find out, we sell them for a hundred dollars?
Well, we wouldn't sell it to them till they sign, but, you know, to get actually more building, you know, more homes, et cetera,
Yeah.
in that, that nice medium range, where it would be, there would be an appetite for folks to want to be able to come to Clinton.
I've got a question for you. This says for current employees, if you've got somebody in Wisconsin that's eager to move to Clinton, why wouldn't we offer this to have somebody move to here, as opposed to Comanche, or another, within the, within the ten-mile radius that's being proposed?
Right.
And then on top of it, I mean, and that, think it's something that has to be covered, is, well, I wanna buy a house there, so I can use it as a rental, and then I'll, so we'd have to put a stipulation on there.
They're not buying it for X amount of years or whatever, right.
There, there's a lot more to this than just.
There is, but I think there's a lot of possibility.
Maybe we could also expand and, and, you know, wrap, wrap in Andy from CRDC to say, could we talk to some of the companies here? Would, would they be willing to put something in to make it even more attractive, a city slash your employer?
Partnership type deal.
To say, we want you to come to Clinton.
Yeah.
Okay, Matt, you just, you just, you just volunteered yourself a new job.
That's all right.
Yeah, what I was gonna say is, I, I think we need to gather more information.
Definitely, but, you know, this might cost some money upfront, but the long-term impact could be well outweigh the cost of, you know.
Yeah, if you roll your kids in school here, there's, there's money there.
You gotta watch how you word that, where they live in the city of Clinton, because not, not everybody lives in the.
I know. The road use tax money, there's a lot of money.
And so what I'll do is, I'll take this and I'll make basically two parts. It'll be incentive overall, but A will be current city employees, but B will be other folks, or that are employed in the city of Clinton, as far as other employers to be able to do. And then we can work, we'll start working with those employers to see if they wanna, you know, I'm thinking of the, the gift basket, to sweeten it up a little bit, to say, where, where our doors are open, please come. We want you here.
Perfect.
So, and then let's go on to the last one, which does not have a letter, but it's the fourth item.
We did that on purpose, just to see.
I know.
But, I'm sorry, Mr. I was gonna say, your honor, I'm sorry. It was, you know, as I go around, and I've been, had, had an opportunity to meet a lot of the, the youth in Clinton through the leadership programs, through Rotary, you know, they come and eat lunch with us, or even in the gym. And there's, there's a, a large population set out there that all they need is a handout. And we talked about this, is the loyalty that you can get for life by just helping, you know, a couple of kids in this town to say, hey, we're gonna, we support you, we believe in you. We're gonna send you off to become an EMT and a paramedic. We're gonna come back, you're gonna be part of our family. I think it'd be a complete game changer. And so, that's really why we kept it separate of A, B, and C, because I think this is another, another thread we want to pull, and of who we really are as Clinton, and what we stand for, and how we can make some changes for folks that will be felt for, for years to come, and that loyalty will remain in that. So that's really why we made it a fourth and a separate piece, because there is some money that's associated this, that we feel that we could, you know, set aside to do this. But just think about if we had four or five kids that we grabbed, and they became future police officers, future firemen, or future street department folks, you know, that we helped get there. And, and they would do a great job and be super low. So that's, that's kind of where that originated from as well. Because we don't have that right now. And then, that would also, that would link back into the contract part, because everything we put into them, we'd want them to stay. And, you know, I had an old boss that always says, make sure they buy a house and buy a car, because they're gonna, and have a couple of bills, and that means that they'll, they gotta keep working. I'm a big Dave Ramsey fan, but have a couple of bills, so.
Yeah, this piece, you know, the, the paramedic part is, is an expense. But I just think, you know, first of all, they're gonna probably get a great education, because they're gonna be doing the job and going to school. There's a little bit of work on our end. I mean, the, for the, the guys on the floor, there's some buy-in, because you're gonna pick up some slack while, you know, new recruit A is off to paramedic school for the night, or whatever. There would be an understanding, and I think Burlington's understanding, they did a similar thing, they went three years. They, it's there, it's up to them to go to class on their own while they're off. We don't pay them to go to class. When they're working, we do let them off to go to class if it's scheduled, so it's working for them.
Would that become a burden for you with overtime to fill in the shifts?
There'd be some backfill. I mean, hopefully, you know, it's, it's a lot of during the winter, when we have good staffing and not as much vacation. So, it's not, the classes aren't over the summer, when we are the shortest, so there'd be some, there'd be some backfill. I, I've asked our EMS guide to look into the colleges to say, is there any way we could ICN these guys? Like on days where they're working, it's just lecture? Instead of driving all the way to Scott Community, can they sit there and watch it on FaceTime, or whatever, chat in the room, or whatever?
That's interesting, yeah.
Something, I mean, instead of. Yeah, with all the technology, why not? I, when I went to college, in Joel, we had ICN, I mean, that was way back.
Well, we had Abacuses too, but.
We just got rid of the ones in the city a couple of years ago.
But I think it's a good idea. I don't, I don't, obviously, if we get a, a pool of twelve candidates, and five of them are paramedics, and they're willing to move into the area, sign the contract, we're probably gonna hire the paramedic that's already trained and ready to go. But if we've got a local guy that really wants the job, and we think he's a great candidate, or she, we'll have that option to go, you know what, let's, let's put you on. I, I don't wanna say that the ones from out of town are going to the bottom of the list, but we, we gotta start thinking a little bit, who are, who's gonna stay? Who's gonna enjoy a, a career here?